All right, it's 6:00 PM. We call a meeting for order for the planning board. Today is April 9th, 2018. So, first item of agenda, we'll actually move right to our new business since we have a chief here in respect to his time as the marijuana ad hoc committee. We'll be discussing how that plays a factor into our town bylaws in regards to the new marijuana law, if you will, how it impacts or will impact us in the future. So, that's it.
Well, just to give you a brief synopsis of where we are with the marijuana committee, we carried together, there wasn't a lot of direction at the time because, as you know, the regulations were still in the box, nobody knew exactly what they were going to be. So, we ended up working towards the temporary moratorium just to give the towns some time to put in whatever regulations and controls that they needed relative to whatever we decided to do with the box sometime because of the guidelines not being out until the end of March, which they just came out a couple of weeks ago now. I see you guys have a guide that gets something forward to me as well. So, now that, you know, the 99% of the commissions' guidelines are out, they did withhold some of them until, I think, July, right, I think, relative to the marijuana bars, social consumption kind of things. So, now we're in a situation where the marijuana bylaw committee is trying to figure out in what direction this town headed, not necessarily from the perspective of making the decision, do we want to regulate it, do we want to ban it, or do we want to do nothing, but to try to figure out what the plan is, what are the milestones that we have to make if we're going to do anything. We've talked a lot about what the possible options are in terms of no regulation whatsoever, right up to a ban, or anything in between. Most of what I've seen from other towns that have tried to either ban or regulate, if they regulate, it's usually done two ways, it's general bylaws, the general bylaws, and more specifically zoning bylaws, depending on what it is that you're going to do. And it's a ban and both as well. So, I think the biggest thing for all of us is that realizing that I'll have a little piece of whatever this response is going to be and try to come up with a very fine direction as to what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. I think ultimately the select board is going to, or selectmen is going to be the ones that have some sort of decision to make in terms of what is put in the voters, and ultimately it's going to be the voters who decide what they want or what they don't want. And I think leading up to that, we all have to decide what does that process between here and there look like. Certainly the marijuana committee can, you know, guide that, and it's going to be, it's going to be a situation where we say, these are all the options, put it out to the public in some sort of public forum, whether it's a question answer or presentation, which is probably the way that should happen. I'm sure you're all aware of what the vote was for Grammy, basically 54 to 46 roughly before legalization. So, that kind of changed some of how we would go about if we were to regulate, especially in regards to, if you regulate it underneath a certain number of, like our alcohol licenses. The law basically says that if you were, if we were to put restrictions in that a, only a certain number of them, a quota of them, it's less than, it can't be less than 20% of that unless we do it a specific way. If you want to ban it, maybe if the town decides to ban it, it's got to be done a specific way. It's got to be, bylaws in the neighborhood as well. Because we voted for the law, rules for us are a little bit different than they are for a town or municipality that voted against it. Slightly one more, it's like one more step that we have to do to date it off. So, I know this is probably not as brief as I should be, but I think basically I came here tonight hoping that we could all figure on what is our, what is our end goal going to be in terms of what's, how do we get from here to there? Try to find out what the planning's position was on it in terms of, did you have any thoughts about, or had any discussions about what you were going to do or not do? I did have some back and forth emails with Larry Ziegler, I think, who told me that PBPC is in the process of developing basically like model bylaws, zoning bylaws. So, that's a huge, that's a great resource if it ends up, but I think, you know, we all have to be on the same page in terms of what, what we are doing or not doing.
And as mostly you know, I'm also partly the committee, the ad hoc committee for marijuana. So, and ask the chief, what do we want to look at as far as the planning board, is there anything that we need to take action on in regards to that? I think we also discussed as far as zoning, we know zoning may be part of it, you know, where it's, where it's going to be, where we're going to allow it in town. And I think Jim, you had said before, a lot of that stuff's in place as far as, you know, where a business can be, cannot be, as far as how it's zoned as well. So, some of the things might be already in place, but I think we need to look at what we want to do because come November 30th, if everything stays the way it is, then what we have is what we have. We can't go back now and then after November 30th say, well, we want it A, B, and C. Evidence has got to be in place by now.
And I think that the biggest problem for us is that it doesn't mean, my, this is my understanding, it doesn't mean that we could never outlaw or not outlaw or should it. The problem becomes without restriction, without those restrictions in place, any permits that come in are not compliant. They don't have to be compliant with a restriction that doesn't exist. So, that's kind of the problematic.
They become preexisting, nonconforming.
Right. And you know, and I think looking at it from the perspective of there already being zoning bylaws in the business, I think that's one way to look at it. I think, I think that this law might have expanded, we should probably expand our view on that only because you're also talking about growing, and you're talking about not just retail, but there's, you know, manufacturing, and there's other businesses, there's a whole host of businesses that you've seen, micro businesses, things like that, that may fall under something that's outside of just this own business. You take some of the farms and things like that. There's just a lot to think about when it comes to it. I'm really looking forward to whenever that Pioneer Valley Planning Commission comes out with her model guidelines because I think, I hope that they cover a lot of what the concerns that we should be thinking about. And certainly we've looked at some other towns that have, you know, either banned it or restricted it, towns that have initially voted for it and now are regulating it. And they're all, they're all over the place in terms of what they did and what they don't. So, to have something from them would be great. Hopefully it's sooner rather than later. But I think just leaving it to what exists from a business standpoint could be problematic when you look at how many of those areas of the new law might not fall within just business zoning. We've talked a little bit about the earth of pharmac, how does that play into it? I don't have the answer to that. I have no answer to that. So...
I think some of the things that come into play as well is a timeframe as far as if we're going to present something as far as planning in regards to bylaws, you know, up against a timeframe as well where we need to have certain things in place. You know, so, again, it's, I think from our stand, our board, what we want to do and what we want to look at as far as planning.
Is there a generic milestone chart that all the committees and boards are following? We know we have the 30th of November, 2018 drop dead date, that one December, if nothing's in place, they can just put an application and go. But we need like 90 days for the Attorney General, we need 35 days for Kathy Kelly Reagan. When you start backing all that up, you pretty much got to have everything done almost by the 1st of July.
I can't say that there is, there's one that exists for everybody because not everybody's on the same timeline. There's other people who had, can't break a moratorium, some of it's December, some of them, you know.
Oh, it's going to hold the challenge.
But I do believe that I just saw one that, and I don't remember the organization or the name, suspended it, they have like a sort of power point basically that includes for a public hearing and outline those dates for them. I don't recall what those dates were. I'm concerned that you'll find it. I don't remember if those dates would coincide with ours.
No, I didn't mean other towns as far as dates because no matter what city or town in Massachusetts, there's mandatory requirements between the bylaw, that's all I meant. Like one of the first ones, the biggest ones, the Attorney General's review. Since our bylaw that went in for the moratorium doesn't require the Attorney General's permission, then we have to automatically back ours up 90 days.
You lost my attention.
Okay. The Attorney General is allowed up to 90 days.
I just got you. I straightened your thing. So, you're saying we should have it done 90 days ahead of time before November 30th, 31st, whatever.
And then you're going to back it up another 35 days for Kathy Kelly Reagan to process it. Then you got to back it up more days, like 30 days for the public hearings and the public meetings. When you start backing all that up, you're looking at all the bylaws written, ready to go before the town by about 1 July. And I think that would be standard for any board or committee within our town because we're all working off the 30th of November date. So, it's a lot to do if you want to make it by 1 July or anything else.
But I think, but I think there's enough benchmark that exists to start moving in whatever direction we want to. It's not, you know, we're not recreating the wheel. There's other, other towns that have done everything from nothing to a ban. So, there's, there's, you know, stuff that we can look at, stuff that we can use as kind of our foundation. It'd be great to have Pioneer Valleys in one as well, but I don't think we're starting, I don't think we're necessarily going to start from scratch. I guess is my point.
When I talked to Larry Smith, the recommended moratorium language that they put out added the 90 days for the Attorney General's office to the end of the moratorium. Ours, the way ours is written from Kathy Kelly Reagan does not add the 90 days on the end.
Right.
So, that puts us, like here's a copy that went to Kathy Kelly Reagan. And I could pull up the one that PBPC put in. And down the end here, basically they said, and to approve by the Attorney General's office, these bylaws can go.
Was that approved?
Yeah, yeah. A lot of the towns use the Pioneer Valley Planning Commissions.
Surprised they would approve it without a hard end date.
The hard end date was 90 days after they, the town did theirs, that gave an additional 90 days.
So, they just incorporated it into their moratorium date?
Exactly. They did. But they said their moratorium was such and such a date, and then it's subject to approval by the state Attorney General's office. So, if it's not approved by the state Attorney General's office, according to what Pioneer Valley Planning Commission said, the bylaws are not set yet and you can't do anything until they're set.
So, they basically, they got themselves three more months after the, into their moratorium.
Exactly. And they also got more time if the Attorney General says, no, no, we don't like this, you've got to redo it. They've got themselves some more time as that goes, which we don't.
And I think that's why it would be, well, not why, but one of the reasons why it would be a huge benefit to if we are going to look at specific language that's already been done, it's already been approved by the Attorney General's office, and we start with that as our baseline and go from there. It's a lot more, we did the same thing with the moratorium, it's a lot more likely to...
But the only thing that I'm afraid of is if all these other cities and towns have added that 90 days on the moratorium date, we're 90 days short.
Regardless, we're still 90 days short.
That's what I said.
So, that's the point.
Okay. If we were going to use Pioneer Valley Commission examples, they may not be available by the time ours are due, is all that's at stake.
Well, that's a question that we'll have to have the answer.
From our perspective, from the planning board's perspective, I think what we ought to do is put together some sort of framework of what we think are most critical issues, have a public forum, get some feedback, so we get some public input, then start and draft the articles based on that, and have our, obviously have our hearing, public hearing. We have to have a public hearing, as Jay mentioned before, we can go to town. From our perspective, of course, during that process, we'll have to be communicating with, with your group to see what other things are, are being put in from other boards, committees, and so on.
I would suggest maybe trying to do that in a coordinated fashion instead of you having one and us having one.
Yes.
Maybe if we all did it together and took segments of it. In fact, it's one of the things that would suggest is that certainly not my place to tell the planning what to do, but I certainly don't mean that idea of a concerted effort. The planning would take care of, say, this is what we're going to do, this is the piece of it that we're going to talk about. And the marijuana committee says, okay, then we're going to focus in on this as, as our piece of it. You know, we have a better coordinated plan as to how it's going to go, and it won't be fragmented by planning having an open, an open meeting or open forum. And then the marijuana committee having one, the select board, or the health. We all get on the same page. If we could do it one night, as long as we knew what sections of the issue each board was going to deal with, is the suggestion.
Well, I think that's a safe way to approach it. That way, everybody is in, in the room at the same time and knows what, the left hand knows what the right hand is thinking.
Right. And unfortunately, there's a lot of moving pieces in the play I've been over.
Yeah, the problem, I agree with having a, a meeting with all those involved. The problem is when you try to capture everything the first time around, I think you just need to look at some of the, the critical issues, especially seeing the timeframe we're under, and just deal with that. It's, it's a, it's basically a living document. Next year or six months later, we can go back and, and improve on it or tweak it if we need to, you know.
And I suspect that's going to need to happen anyway because any time there's been a major change to the law, you know, there's a scramble to catch up with it, and then a few years after it's implemented, implemented, and not even a few years as it falls, things have to change because you, not just locally, I mean, state level, realize that, oh, well, we had auto office. Now that this is a little bit different from the situation that we thought it was going to be, and, you know, those illegal tweaks have to happen, I don't think we're going to be any different in that regard. That's going to have to be something that we look, you know, we plan on.
Since the 30th of November, 2018 date is set in stone, they have the moratorium, do you think it'd be beneficial for the entire town to create one timeline with milestones and say, hey, if you don't make it by this, you're not going to have your public hearings and public meetings in times because we're all working to the same date?
We can't tell our boards what to do.
We can recommend, you can give them a drop dead date. If you don't have your public hearing by this date, there's no way you're going to get the Attorney General's approval in time. So, your portion of it is not good, so we'll not be, there won't be anything in place for that.
Chief, I'm not going to speak, you know, for the committee because I'll let you do that as chairman, but that may be something that comes from the ad hoc marijuana committee as far as these are the dates you may want to be concerned with, and that something like that maybe can be sent to each board. So, these are the dates, dates you should be concerned with, and each board's going to act independently and act as well.
I agree, but I'm just saying since the town is working, everybody in the town...
I, I think I could speak for our group and say, you know, without having to talk to them, but I don't think there's a problem with us developing, you know, some sort of loose suggested schedule as to this is what we need to do if we want to be here by, you know, 90 days before November 30th. I think that's simple, and we can certainly start with that. Yeah, I don't think that's a problem. I think it's beneficial.
I personally think you're talking at least two meetings. The first one, more of an informational representative meeting of what the ad hoc committee is coming together with or considered, fill all the boards in, maybe get some feedback from those boards, as well as if Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has come up with anything, everybody kind of absorb it, meet among themselves, then come back for another meeting to, if you will, finalize.
I think, I think that's a, I think that's a good suggestion because that would give us an opportunity, when I say I've seen all the specific groups, to have conversations about what issues and pieces of this are each specific board. That way, you know, just for sake of discussion, you know, about planning, sky zoning, anything related to zoning regulations, keep in mind that the marijuana ad hoc committee, for instance, is going to look at this, 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 and this. Board of Health has to figure this piece of it out, or the selectmen. That would probably be a good way to get specific direction for a second meeting that was more along the lines of what we talked about initially, an open forum type of situation. So, I guess that would be the best way to gauge resident opinion on this one.
What other boards, board slash committees in town are you considering, other than ad hocs, selectmen, planning, board of health, who else?
Zoning.
Zoning Board of Appeals? Because that's more of an appeal board.
I got to look out, it's going to apply to that.
But, you know, it certainly can be involved, but are you, you know, are you stretching it out so far as to where I think it's a stretch at this point in time, a conservation?
Well, I think maybe the way to, I don't know how, I don't really answer that question, but I think maybe the way to address that question is to put it out to all the boards and committees and say, this is what our, this is what we're doing, this is the timeframe. If you have any concerns about your area of law or regulations, this is the meeting you should be at, this is the timeframe we're on.
A blanket invitation to any and all.
I would cover it, I would say. And that meeting might, if some people, if certain people show up, that meeting might bring up, that first meeting might bring up some concerns that we say, um, this came up at the meeting, this is squarely in your area of expertise, we need you to get to work on this.
If I'm not mistaken, you can have up to, what, 10 plants per household for personal use, and that's, it can be anywhere, there'll be a few annual butts.
That's not going to change.
That's right.
Nothing we do is going to change that. Nothing we do is going to change somebody driving through town, who happens to have a walk-in through town. The law is the law when it comes to possession and things like that. Medical marijuana, just no matter what we do in the next, you know, year, isn't going to matter, it's going to stay exactly the way it is. We're not changing the law in terms of possession and use or changing, you know, Grammy's response to the commercial piece of this. And that's what we, that's what has to happen.
The 10 plants per house, per household, or per occupant of house?
Per household.
Okay.
That might actually be 12.
I thought it was 10.
I believe that that's a hundred percent comparison. It's there 12.
Was it two plants per person, per household?
I think there's a max of...
What, a max of 200?
There is a, per person, but then there's a whole.
Yeah, there's, there's, right.
But I think the bigger issues for us are figuring out the direction of what we're going to do in a coordinated fashion because there's a lot of groups, a lot of things to cover, and not a lot of time to cover it.
I mean, at this point in time, I think it's, it's, it can be in town, businesses can be in town to do it, to sell it, to grow it. So, we got to figure out if that's the case, and continues that way, where do we want these businesses to be? Because that stands, that's, that's what, that's how it is right now. Could that change down the road? That could definitely change down the road. Things, actions can happen, things can change, but we need to do that.
As I said, you know, you always have to tweak the laws when something new and large comes in and take a look and see how they're working.
For instance, people could put together a petition and get it on the ballot for an election and, you know, to say whether or not it could be in town, it could come back and people could vote against it to have it in town, so that kind of, you know, we got to look at how that would play out too. So, but I think we deal with what we have right now, what we know to be the fact.
And again, it's the commercial piece of it that we're looking at. It's not the how many you can have in your house, you know, under the laws. That was the law that de-privileged or legalized possession under a certain amount. You know, and the law we're talking about now is the commercial piece of it. That's the piece that we need to really take a look at. Along the lines of, you know, one of the things we should have in place too that we don't is a public consumption bylaw. That's something else that the marijuana committee probably needs to look at as well.
So, I mean, from our, from our point, chief, I'd ask if that's something that the committee can do is set up timeframes and let each board, I mean, play a factor. You said, you know, the board of health, the planning board themselves, the board of selectmen, if you think, you know, I said with the zoning, if you think it plays a factor, if it does, it doesn't have to.
It can't hurt to send it.
They may, they may want to look at just to see, you know, if it plays a factor.
Do you know the Agricultural Commission still live in this town?
As far as, I was going to say, you got a letter to, oh my God.
Perry?
No. It's the senior of the most performing.
Out of the west front?
The street.
Evelyn?
Evelyn, Evelyn Hatch. So, as far as I know, they, I don't know how, how active they are, but so I would definitely include them in.
Right.
No, we can, we can develop a timeline, send it out to specific boards, and then maybe in that timeline, some suggested dates for meetings. Especially, you know, the first meeting for the boards, I don't know. That might be a little bit tougher to coordinate than it sounds when you think about how many possible boards and how many people we're talking about posting all those meetings.
But there's one thing that will not change, and that's the drop dead days.
Yep.
And that's why if we broke the timeline after that, if you miss it, you missed it. That's something.
Well, I think that's the point I'm trying to make, we don't want people to miss it.
I don't.
So, people want to, if, if a certain committee or board wants to take action, they have the, the knowledge of when they need to take action.
Yeah, I can do that, we can do that.
And that would be for the town. If you finish it early, that's great, but if you don't finish it by this time, you're sore on.
Yeah, I can do that, and forward out some different boards and get started another. Hopefully we'll get a meeting, that meeting sooner rather than later. Should I send this to the planning board? Everybody, one person?
Send it to all of us, if you will. Then we're probably going to divide some of the bylaws up to help each other.
Yeah, send it to Kathy, and Kathy will just shred it out to us.
Kathy could probably do that for all the boards and committees.
Yeah, I'll speak to her.
Yeah, yes.
That's probably what I was going to do, was send her.
Yeah. Here's the day you've got to be done back, Kathy. To include your work, one of this has got to be done back.
Yeah, you do that. If there's anything else that planning needs from me, most of the information that I'm getting relative to it is coming from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, so I'm sure you're seeing the same thing I do.
They get it the same time because I emailed to them, or CCD you.
Yeah, we get it from the Massachusetts as well, but it's the same stuff.
Well, I think Pioneer Valley should also be included in that meeting.
Yeah, I hope, I hope they have that done. If they have it done in the next month, that'd be great because...
Well, that would be nice if they do have it done, that we can invite our rep to the meeting. That's a good point.
I had, you know, Larry today, he said that they're meeting next week, and I think he said they were hoping to have it done in June, early June? No, May, in May, so...
Did it kick off May or not complete?
I don't know if they met yet. He asked me if I could be there. I was interested, I guess they've got a focus group or working on it, and I can't make the one next week, but I told him after that, if he was interested, I can make it. So, if they get something done quickly, that'd be great because, you know, they're going to hopefully get a lot of things that we work on.
Because the only thing that I mentioned is when I, I was down there last week for, I'm the Pioneer Valley representative for the town, and I was working on something else in a cell area, and he mentioned that they were going by the schedule of the town plus 90 days, and then we didn't have that option, so we have to be in front of them more than the people they were working with.
You have anything else, chief? Or is it you?
I can take care of it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We went on to our next item on the agenda here. 6:15 is Kelly Burner?
Burner.
Had a 50/50 chance of getting it right or wrong, so.
Want them to sign in?
Yes, if we get out of you, sign in. Chief's going to ask him before you leave, if you could sign in to just.
You should get a stamp for all the things you signed, you have a stamp.
No, no, it's been recorded, we know you're here.
I'll be late.
Thanks again. So I don't get a sugar bone? Okay, Kelly?
Um, so I'm here to discuss about my, the size of my sign license, my apothecary. I got a phone call from somebody who's, you know, the saying to come in, and supposedly you guys are going to ask me questions about the sign.
So this, this is a discussion on just the sign and not the business itself?
So, as far as, I know I'm still in the process of getting a license through the town. I just handed in my $50 payment in my application form, so I'm still waiting to hear back from them. But in regards to the business itself, I want to open an apothecary, because I currently have a, a business, apothecary is apothecary, and I'd like to station my shop, add some inventory, which my parents own, right down the street here, and have my apothecary in there.
What are we looking at, is how it's going to affect the site plan? Is that it? Do you have another business inside there?
There's nothing there, no. It's like, we do, we do law firms catering, but we don't do many, it's just a home office for us, so the retail part is just there.
So explain, explain to us what you're going to be doing in there?
So I'm going to be selling, I guess it's retail, I make herbal products, so I'm a certified herbalist, high original herbalist, here in Western Mass, and right now, you know, I'm looking into specifically doing mostly wholesale, until I can actually find a shop to put my products in. But it's going to be an apothecary, it's going to be internal and external products. And that's something that I wanted to discuss with you guys as well, what I have to do in regards to internal products, but that's kind of a different route that I have to go. So, yeah.
That wouldn't be through us. The only thing we'd be concerned about would be the signage. It's a retail business, so we need to see a site plan, what your parking situation would be there, if you have ample parking. It's not really a change in use.
Square footage, that kind of stuff.
Pretty, pretty simple, uh, site plan.
My site plan is really, you know.
I know, but we'd still have to see it, and that's what we'll be approving, or just, you know, on whatever you presented.
So what, is it that you need from me that I have to hand in, just all of that information?
A plot plan showing parking, access. What else were you looking for?
Number of parking places, dimensions, handicap.
So it's already an existing building that has been there, which was approved, and from my understanding, you're looking to, if you will, maybe rent, if, say, a part of that building, so would that, how would that play out?
I heard, I'm just looking for space in my addition, that was already approved.
Yeah, it was approved for the, the business that's there, but now that we're putting, you're putting another business in there.
There's just, we grew up on a state or, that went out there, I never, I never did a retail there.
What were you originally permitted for?
Twenty city establishment.
And you're not, you're not using it for that?
No, no.
We still need to see a plot, a, the plot plan showing where the parking is going to be, handicap access for your business, not your business, where the sign location's going to be, what size sign, what type of sign, nothing, nothing, uh.
I said, what, 2.4, I mean, my sign.
No, we say that's, it's pretty weird.
I think if the sign itself, I imagine it ought to be five feet long and two feet width.
That's.
So it's a square, it's an ironed, there's a sign.
That's.
That's big.
That's over the.
Size.
Yeah.
Over the permitted limit, without a, uh.
Special permit?
Right.
It's regardless of, is any of your preference?
I think that, was it nine square feet is.
It is nine square feet.
Is allowable, without a special permit, is that correct?
You have to buy laws here.
I do.
So in other words, with the, with the sign, there's, there's bylaws that are set up, so you'd have to meet the bylaws for the sign. If it's outside the bylaw, but it allows, then you'd have to come and apply for a special permit, for the sign. Is there, is there a sign out there already?
Yeah, I got a, I got a sign, it's right underneath my sign.
That's the illuminated one?
Yeah, Kim has one.
Right next to it.
Yeah. And hers would be just all of it, Kim's.
Yeah, we don't know if those other signs got special permits.
I think it was larger, and required by the latest.
Yeah, Jim's got the actual page, definitely.
Those are very.
Page 55. 55?
Starts, I think.
I thought at first you were talking to Jim. I'm like, how can you tell, he just went by?
I see that.
Jay?
I'm just scrolling through it. I can get down here.
That's an illuminated one.
I think you might be past it, Jay. I think you might be past it, are you looking at the size of the sign?
Come on.
I'm trying to look at the sign, and up to 10 items of information.
I thought it was 48 square feet.
This is not going to be an illuminated sign, right? It's going to be made out of?
Um, right now I have two people, one kind of made out of wood, and the other one, so just metal.
Okay, so what are metal? Well, that's the other thing, is it going to be lit from below or above, or at night?
I mean, I wasn't even going to do all that, yeah, I.
The height of the sign being there.
Yeah, because the height cannot exceed five feet, sort of says here, on that part. I'm looking for the total area of the sign. Says each commercial industrial use shall be required to place their street address numbers in four inch high letters on the entrance door. 25 square.
Where's that, Jim?
64, general business, excuse development. That's the overlay, though. So if you're proposing a two by five?
Yeah, so five feet long, two.
Yeah, one square feet.
The illuminated's nine square feet, right here.
Yeah.
But she says she's not going to illuminate it.
Yeah, we talked about that.
So you should be fine. So just show us what, you said, you have to show us where the location is. I know you're telling us where it is, but when we approve it, and it goes on file, all that information has to be there with what specifically was approved.
So what are you looking for?
Again, we need a plot plan showing the parking, access, number of spots, number of parking places, where the sign's going to be located, size of the sign.
Height of the sign.
Yeah, the height of the sign.
Like height, and how far it is off the ground?
Correct.
Right, correct. Because there's a certain height that can be.
It's hard to remember next to work, so.
So in other words, if, if you have a, a plan of, you know, of the building, and you're thinking that that sign's going to be 20 feet from the front door, well, show that. It's 20 feet from the front door, here the sign's going to be, you know, this is how big the sign's going to be, and we expect to be, you know, three feet off the ground, no higher, and, you know, five feet.
And you don't, you don't need any, like, pictures, you just get it?
Anything you can provide us.
It's better, right, the more information, the better, obviously.
So there's, um, information.
You, it, just bring it back to the board, the planning board, right here. So obviously, you'd contact Kathy at the town hall, and she, like, now that she puts you on the agenda, you can take a look at it, and if you have any questions, we can ask you.
I have it all, I'm right, I'm right now, I can write it in. My site plan is, I won't, it, it should actually be set up. We need to write that.
I do it all, I mean, as far as the sign too, I'd put that all on, so you can, you can all send it to come in.
The sign's on the site plan too, my sign, I say, or your sign's going underneath it, underneath my sign. So that's all you need, right, that'll be it?
So it's going underneath your sign, underneath the illuminated sign?
Sign.
But on that post, or whatever, somehow?
I mean, I, I don't see it being tonight, so that's why I decided, but, you know, get a hold Kathy.
Kathy Leonard.
And be put back on our next, you know, agenda for following meeting, which is, uh, two weeks from tonight. I mean, it seems simple enough, but until we actually, till we actually see it, it's the same for everybody, to actually see it and look at it, and to say yes or no.
Isn't there a specific number of copies we need to, as well?
Well, you need an actual site plan.
Site plan.
So, the site plan says what?
When we need copies to put on file and that kind of stuff as well.
Copies for the other departments?
Yeah.
Five, you said five?
Because what I'm seeing here, the site plan that you're going to be bringing in us, if you're saying it's yours, it was approved in 2007, so we'd have to, the latest bylaw change was 2014, so under your sign, for your site plan, you'd be pre-existing, but she wouldn't be, if something changed between 2007 and 2014. That's why we need a site plan, to make sure, with the most current bylaws, because anything else is pre-existing, it's already been approved. Because I'm looking at yours right now, in fact, I can show it to you if you want, if that's you.
But she doesn't need a totally different site plan, or she just has me in pencil drawn, or something like that, you're saying?
Like you said, if you already have a site plan of the building, and it exists, of all the parking spaces and all that stuff, and where the sign is, pretty much, you can bring that in, and where her sign's going to be, I mean, you can obviously add that to the site plan. You don't have to go out and have it all already done, you have it already, your building, parking spaces are all staying the same, handicap spots, things like that. Right. As, and as Jay mentioned, we need to take a look at it to make sure it meets the term.
Yeah, because he hears yours right now, the one that you have. September 10th, 2007.
Jim, are you looking up how many copies, is that what you're looking?
No.
Oh. So is it five copies?
As you can see by this, if you look at the current bylaws for site plans.
We don't know if we're going to need a hearing.
This document would not be, because there's no drawing, there's no, so back in 2007, when they get a site plan that you did here, you met those bylaws at that point in time. But now this is 2018, and there's no diagram of your plan.
Because it's already zones.
So if that's where you go at home and get this document, it would fail.
Is this where?
That's all we're trying to say, because it doesn't mean the current bylaws.
Well, that's what I'm wondering now, you know, can we just go for the sign?
Well, that's the issue, but I'm showing.
As opposed to.
Okay, first of all, first of all, we don't know whether or not they need a special permit for the sign until we see it, what they're proposing. If it meets the criteria, all they need is a, a sign permit, they don't need us. If they're not, if they're showing us the parking, the parking situation and how they're operating, and it already falls within the current site plan approval, they don't need us. They can just go ahead and, and go through whatever other Board of Health, or whatever other committees or boards that you may, that, that is not under our purview. So that's why we're saying, just show us what you're going to do, show us the plot plan, make sure, because it's not really the use change, it's still retail. You don't necessarily need a sign, a hearing for a sign, because we don't know for a fact that it's, that it's going beyond what's, what's allowed without a special permit. So if you just show us what you're planning on doing in paper, so we can see it, you may just, you may be just on your way.
Thank you.
Could you sign in, please?
Sure.
Yours?
Yes.
Sure.
Sure. Mr. Phil, wait a minute.
Yeah, damn it.
That's why you're in, is the only time.
All right. So, moving on to Zabowski's Farm, discussion regarding, remember some new bakery?
Well, we're trying, we're a little confused in the process, I guess, so we're here for some guidance.
Okay. Well, try not to confuse us.
I'm completely confused, so, um, I read everything, I know all the answers to your sign questions if you want. I read everything, and I, I just, I'm not clear as to what we're doing, or what we're, but we would like to bake off some products in our stand, and, um, I guess you're gonna take it from there, I guess.
So are you looking to have a bakery inside the building now?
Oh, and I don't know what constitutes a bakery, you know, um, we, the oven is there, we went through the planning board, you know, the, um, Board of Health, and we didn't, the term, change of use, never occurred to me, I couldn't even find it in, in the regulations, so I don't know where we're at with, like, the building inspector just suggested that we come here. So we pulled permits for what, everything, you know, like, like the, the gas line and the plumbing and all of that, we, that's, and we've got approval. I think Frank Marion and the fire department are coming out tomorrow to inspect the plumbing and, um, the fire department's coming out to inspect the gas line, um, propane and tank, and, um, there was like propane in the building, and I guess the building inspector, he was a little upset with me because we didn't pull an electrical permit, but there was no electric. It's a plug-in, it's just like, we have a butt outlet and we plugged it in. So, I'm not sure what, but anyway, he's coming out with the electrical inspector tomorrow. Anybody come out and see whatever they want, you know, I guess we're just a little, like, what's going on, how do we do this?
From, from my perspective, we rezoned that area anyway, for a business overlay, number one. Number two, you're already retail. You've already got parking, you're off, you already sell products within the store.
We've just been selling bread since 1982, that's why it never occurred to me that it was a change of use.
So, anything that you're doing inside the store, you've already gone through that process with the permitting through, everything except for electrical, plumbing, gas and all that, so I don't see where we have anything.
We didn't know, we were just by law.
Yeah, one of the, I don't know, he, he was like, you better go see the planning board and...
Well, the building inspectors knew, believe it or not, another new one.
Well, no, I'm gonna, and I didn't, you know, I was like, I'm not sure, I'm not gonna be able to tell. He thinks that we were trying to do something covert, and I just...
No, what, what it is, is he's not familiar with the zoning bylaws. He's a building inspector, he knows building code, he's not familiar with the zoning bylaws. So what he's doing, until he does get familiar with it, if he, if he, there's any question, he's just referring applicants to the different, well, to this board, and...
So just so you know, we've changed no walls, or nothing, but the, um, the, the Board of Health asked us to, which we're gonna do anyway, and...
Our, our purview is only in the exterior, and you're already operating as a store, a farm store, you're gonna continue to operate that way, so we have no...
At least I don't.
There's not gonna be any tables, chairs, or whatever.
I'm here to say...
No, we appreciate it, that's, that's...
Well, no, like you said, you, in, in all fairness, it's to make sure that everything is okay, so you don't, you don't find out, well, you should've done this, you should've done that.
And we have parking for sixty-two hundred cars, and honest to God, if this does that kind of business for me, I'll be retiring this year.
But you're not gonna be putting up any tables, chairs for people to eat?
No, no, we're not, we're not, absolutely not. You will see, um, my, uh, in court, we tried to make a section so that my employees could sit down in, take a break.
That's, that's not a customer. It's kind of you.
So the only thing different to what you're already doing, saying, than what you're doing now, is you're gonna bake your own bread inside the building, instead of buying the bread and selling it. That's the only difference, right?
That's the only difference.
It was always local bakers that did it, the way...
And then you sold it.
Right.
And we'll be using local flour and local, you know, local products, so, and it doesn't, it doesn't switch off the balance of our minimum of fifty percent raise on the farm, I mean, we're like seventy, eighty percent, we're, we're so far above that, that...
You're just making the products you're gonna sell. Versus buying it somewhere else and selling it.
Good, looking forward to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll be there.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Take care, folks. See you later.
Take care.
Do you wanna go back into the minutes, or?
Yes, we can go back, uh, do our administrative duties. Bills, do you have any bills to approve?
Are they in there?
I haven't seen any. Not to me, there is none, but it's, uh...
We haven't had any bills in a long time.
No, no. Ever since you became a board member, we've stopped the bills. Just discussions.
No, doesn't look like it. No bills.
No bills.
All right, I'll throw that one.
No bills.
I don't think we approved the minutes last time. Because we didn't have it up here.
I thought, I thought you three, I wasn't at that meeting.
Right, I think we approved it.
And I think you three approved the meeting that I was not at.
Right.
Yeah, that's up. Clean it up, Kathy.
Right, March twelfth.
But you have the March sixth meeting, yeah.
So we're approving the minutes from our last meeting.
March twenty-sixth. Correct.
Yes. Which, Jim, you were not here for.
Just in case you're wondering.
Yes, we looked, we looked.
So you're expanding.
Where to be found?
I'm in motion to approve the March twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen minutes as written.
Okay, is there a second?
I, I, I mean, I could, Jay's still reading, so.
Just go one more, one more time, you know, I know I read it late tonight, you put it out, I haven't read it since then.
That's been a while.
Yeah. No, I'll second it.
Okay, so any discussion regards to the minutes? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Got it. You're not mistaken. Hey, done?
Correspondents from PVPC.
Yeah, that was more than, yes, he went over his budget, from what I understand.
That's this one that you have, there, Bishop. You gotta go, okay. That's this amendment one he's talking about, that needs to be signed. And sent a copy, the other piece is a copy of what was signed. That's still there. There you go.
So what's this, it's a new one?
It's a new one, yeah, an increase, fifteen hundred dollar increase.
Yeah, because he went over the ceiling of the previous agreement, so that'll be the thing. And he has to raise the ceiling by fifteen hundred dollars.
That was probably due to...
Munson Ridge.
Munson Ridge and a few other things that we had going on, so it's justified.
Yeah, his original agreement was seventy-five hundred.
Right.
But we're just supposed to raise the ceiling to nine thousand, that's all.
Is this something that requires a vote, or is it just merely a...
Well, I, I need to make sure that there's money in account before I can sign off on that, so I'll have to ask Chris to make sure that, that money's there, which I'm assuming it is.
But then I would think we would still need to vote, wouldn't we? Because that's a change and not a voting.
Yes, we should have to, but I need to make sure that, that money is there, because we can't vote on something if the funds aren't there.
Can we make a motion pending? No?
No.
We're better off waiting to know what's in the account before we...
Fairly, we can get it out of the way, but...
No, I'll follow up with Chris, I wish, I wish we would've known sooner where we were with it, that, like...
Okay.
But I'll follow up with Chris regards to it, and...
Well, the only question I have is, is a nine thousand dollar ceiling, that'd be enough to get us through to thirty June? That's the question we should really ask. How much money is left in the kitty between the balance we paid out in the nine thousand dollar ceiling, and that balance that is in there for fiscal year eighteen, is that gonna be enough to get us through thirty June? Or do we wanna increase it more, or what?
We'll know, we'll know after...
Hold on, I'm just...
When it finds out.
Right, I'm just...
Number one, and number two, we can always amend it, we can, if they, if we go over for some reason or other, there's gotta be a reason for it.
Right.
I'd rather amend than give them a full...
Because I imagine we'll probably be using him on some of the Maryland bylaws and stuff like that.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that's all coming out of our budget.
Right.
Just as far as zoning, if you're gonna provide, like, the...
So I will do that, I will follow up with Chris Martin, regards to, we could add the necessary funds in our account, and if so, we'll, you know, if we can bring it back, and we can discuss that at that time.
To where we are. I could do that, I'd want to know what our budget is, and what our balances, I should say.
Right, with, with them too, he's just asking for an increase, where's that increase due, as Jay was saying, does that mean we have a, you know, do we have a thousand dollars between now and June thirtieth to spend, or, or is that like, you know, is that cap us right out, close to the top of the nine thousand dollars, so that's the, gotta find out.
Well, it says effective the first of July last year.
Well, he's, he's right.
Amended as of April five.
Right.
So that'll have to change, until...
Yep.
So is Kath, is Kathy billing out this other stuff, do we need to tell her, yet? Or is it too soon to do that?
Well, we can't bill out for Munson Estate, you haven't finished anything with that, that's not completed yet. We can still bill, I assume, part of it, that's what we gotta decide too, whether we wanna send out...
Well, Munson Estate, we can bill out for that.
We can build out for what we've been charged.
Because that's just a definitive piece of it.
So shall we give that information to Kathy? So, three thousand, three oh four forty, or consultant fees?
That's what he's billing us, that's not necessarily what the amount that is due to town.
That's just what he's billing us.
So, so as far as this goes, this is actual.
But he hasn't billed us yet. That I've...
No, he's just, he's just letting us know, right, he's letting us know that this is what, that's coming.
Yeah, Munson isn't, isn't necessarily done yet. We still have to get all the lots defined.
They're a long ways from...
They gotta...
So, are we not billing them until at the end?
Well, we don't know the number of lots, if something changes with...
But we know it's gonna change, because the...
We've already, we've already charged them, we tried a hearing for a lot per...
Have we been paid? We did charge them already?
Yeah, they've been billed.
That's all part of the permitting process, and we approved it.
Okay, that's right, you are correct, yes.
They have to do a new public hearing, because of the changes they're gonna make to it. And they'll start all over again.
So in effect, we've already billed them for what Larry's charged us.
And, and then some.
Okay.
Because there's other costs, advertising, you know, so on and so forth, so that's...
So we don't need Kathy to do any billing here on any of this yet?
Well, we're actually going to have, I mean, we can, we're asked, we can build per our consultant fees.
Yep.
Yeah, we can, it says it in our fee.
Right.
And wipe this clean.
Mm-hmm. So these fees are here.
No.
No, no, that's... Go ahead.
These fees under Munson Ridge are here. I'm presuming, since we didn't know about it, Munson Ridge hasn't been built for me yet.
Right.
So these should be billed to Munson Ridge, under the consultant part.
No.
Okay.
The, the, the fee that we charged Munson Ridge, per lot, for the, for the preliminary and definitive, includes this.
Doesn't include a consultant?
Yes, it does. If it was peer review.
Peer review, outside consultants.
Outside consultants, that would be different, he's, he's representing the board, that comes out of the, the...
Right.
The permit, the hearings, and so on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
So...
Right, outside, outside consultant is peer review, or if we have to bring in another engineer, what, peer review.
Correct.
Okay, I'm confused. Blah, 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 blah. I thought we had in here, in our fee schedule, that we could build, because that was one of the things on the, um, adability to charge consultant fees and our bylaw changes, but I thought it was pointed out that it was already in here.
It is. I pointed it out when I hooked it up.
Well, I think what Jim's saying, that's, that's an additional peer review, this is something that was part of it.
In other words, if we had to do a traffic study, if we had to do a, a peer review of the, the, um, storm water management, or, or something along those lines, then we charge additional amounts for that.
So right now, we're just hoping that what we've charged is gonna cover all that, what Larry's gonna be charging.
There should be more than, well, not more, but there should be sufficient funds to cover that, based on the permitting process.
Right, we're going, we're supposed to go, okay, and that should cover some of that.
Okay, so we're done with that one?
Yeah, so what, the question is, the South Street large scale, nothing ever took place with that, right? And the one on South, one thirty-four South Street?
That's the one that they withdrew.
Withdrawed, so we...
And he, his remarks, he says you're gonna have a hard time collecting those costs.
Right. Well, that's just what I'm saying, so that, we paid for that, and we didn't collect any fees.
What, what are we referring to, on this?
The first one in his list.
That's the one they withdrew without prejudice. Remember the one close to Westover?
On the other side of the...
Right, on the other side, not the Dickinson one.
The south side of that.
Right, Dickinson's one seventy-four, and one thirty-four.
No, Dickinson is one thirty-four.
Okay, then I get it back, Dickinson's one thirty-four, then the one seventy-four, the main beat came with a G, if I'm not mistaken?
Mullen, wasn't it?
Okay.
So where does that come into, where it's, it's our responsibility as the planning board to assume certain fees, because people are coming and questioning and asking how this play out, we, and we're having someone look into it.
Well, technically, if you go by the fee schedule, anytime anybody comes in to ask us anything, we're supposed to charge them thirty bucks.
One thirty-four South Street, we had a hearing on that, correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, so the permit, and the hearing, and the advertising was all picked up on the application. Did it cover? Did it cover 1927?
I don't know. That's something I'll look at.
Do you want me to check with Kathy, or...
Yeah, we'll go to Kathy to find out.
Are you talking the 134 or the 174?
134 South.
Dickinson firm versus...
Remember the permit? We charge X amount per square foot on footings.
Correct.
The regular application fee, whether based on size, advertising.
And we should be charging consultant fees for the peer reviewers.
District letters. Yeah, it'd be interesting to know what was paid. Because we looked at that as a...
What was charged, yeah.
What was charged. Because that would have been looked at as a large project.
Right.
Which we have down as $1,200 plus 10 cents a square foot.
Just curious, so we can ask Kathy what was billed out for that?
Now, I know we spelled that out in the minutes. Way back.
Way back, right, way back one.
Yeah, it'd be calculated for the minutes.
So Kathy may be able to work it out.
I can look that up and check with Kathy too and all that. Now, what about 174 South Street?
Well, we're going to have to eat that one because we didn't collect any money upfront.
Do they come and...
They came in and they requested to withdraw their application without prejudice.
I think it was in here.
That's 174.
Yep, from here. That's the one right next to Westover. Because I know Daniel Coste came in that night from Westover, and I know him. And he stopped and shook my hand before he left.
So that's the one that got... That's the one that was withdrawn, that 134.
Right, 174.
So this is the number. We want to make sure we recouped.
The 89370?
Correct.
I'll check with Kathy.
But I'm curious as far as 134 South, what we billed out though as well as the...
We didn't bill them anything because they just went through their application.
No, we're back on 134.
Oh, I thought he said 174.
You're confusing me.
I thought he said 174.
No, I said 134.
Okay.
And Munson is ongoing.
Yes. So bottom line is I will still talk to Chris in regards to that to up our contract to nine thousand dollars.
$1,500 increase.
Yes. I have to see how much we've actually spent already with Pioneer Valley. That actually probably would be a question for Kathy as well. What have we spent with them already? What's been paid out to them? And what's outstanding, is really outstanding.
Are you going to tie that in with what you're doing there?
I can ask Kathy.
You have a question? You have this look like I have a question. I think we only had one bill come in for this fiscal year from him that I've seen that we had to approve at the...
Must have been a big bill. Because he's always telling us.
Yeah, we're in law.
And if everything's... Obviously, if Chris tells us we're fine to go ahead, I'll let Larry know to redo the contract.
For the next meeting and we'll...
Yep.
Or maybe the bill, the new bill, the 89333041976 is going to put us over the budget when they submit that. That's why he wants to make sure the money is...
Well, that's, I think that's what it's, this stuff, this here is going to put us over.
Yeah.
And we don't have, without having it. So he's telling us we're going to go over our original contract with you.
Right.
What we allowed it to spend, we've gone over, so... And that's the way I'm reading it.
Because the last correspondence I have on the 174 is July 20th, 2017.
And Larry is considering that's all we need to do to carry us through. End of June.
Okay. I'm working up with it.
All right.
So did we do MGL Chapter 91? Is that what we're doing there?
That's what we're going to do now. Because we went back to the top. We're going back down.
We're just...
Discussion of Mass General Law, Chapter 91. Do we have any... I know we have ponds and stuff, but do we have any docks or anything in any of those ponds?
Dock?
Yeah.
Maybe four pond.
Yeah, I don't know. That's why I was asking.
I think all the other waterways, such as two frames.
Aldrich.
Aldrich. I don't think that there are motorized vessels, if that's the correct term.
It appears so.
Right.
As well as there would be, at Aldrich, there's really no place to put... Well, Aldrich Lake is pretty much surrounded, either inaccessible on the Mill Lane side due to the steep cliff. And on the northerly side is, that's owned by the state.
Right.
So you have a small portion of Aldrich Lake that would be east of Amer Street where some of the houses near the power lines could access. But I kind of see it as a non, a nothing for us. Because if somebody's going to build a dock or anything else, they're going to have to get permission from conservation to do that. And all we're just merely being done is a courtesy submission is required by the applicants to send it to us.
And they have a list of great ponds and we don't have any. Hampshire County.
We don't have any ponds?
No, Belchetown does. Lake Arcadia, Lake Holland, Lake Medellin.
And the three.
This is really a moot point for us. We'll be given a heads up if there's ever something that goes through. If we have any concerns about parking, so on and so forth.
Well, according to it, it's already gone into effect.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But if someone files a permit to apply, then we'll be given a courtesy to review it to see if we have any concerns.
I think all it means is it's saying how Chapter 91 applies to planning board now.
Right.
That's all it's saying.
Right.
It's not telling us what to do. It's just telling us...
No, just saying new license...
Really right, how the law applies to the planning board now. If something came up. Good with that?
Good.
Review of potential bylaw changes. So last meeting, Jim, we had brought it up and we look forward to have concerns moving forward without you here. We definitely want you to be part of it.
Now, you didn't bring your materials, did you? Let's see what I have. Next to homes here. And I have an extra commercial area post up. That's the one where we want to add estate lots to it. The others, I don't have extras of. This is mine.
So why don't we start somewhere and put down together?
Well, this is the beginning here. Do you want to start with the fee schedule?
Sure, we can start with the fee schedule. So again, we were looking to add a definition of what is small, what's medium, what's large projects.
Yeah, because when we did it, it didn't define what was small, medium and large. But it had different prices in the fee schedule.
Right, so we need to look at, I mean, that's probably what we're going to look at is how many square foot is small? How many square foot would be medium? How many square foot would be large?
And that's what...
Yeah, I don't... Problem with doing that is it doesn't, it's not necessarily the size or the square footage. It's the complicity of the project on what Larry or our consultant's going to charge us to review it.
Well, in here, it says small division. It just, small subdivision is defined that way, but not a... Not anything else.
Is this the page you're using though?
Yes. That and then the fee schedule page.
So are we going to leave it open again for this for the board to decide what they feel is considered a large project? Maybe not be depending on the size, but as to what needs to be done as far as...
Complexity?
Well, I think that becomes very arbitrary on our part. That could potentially be contested.
You want the fee schedule there?
That's what I'm asking. I mean, at one point, we came up with this idea.
I guess, I guess I'm okay with using this, but there needs to be a caveat there. Plus, any additional costs. You know, this should be the base fee. And then any additional cost incurred by town consultant.
I think she has it here if you look at my TV.
Addability to charge consultant fees. But how do we define small, medium, large?
Well, that was it, what's considered, that's...
Well, according to what she gave us, a small project is the prices, but we don't... We haven't decided what the square footage is, just the price per square.
That's because that was defined by subdivision.
Right.
That's for the subdivision bylaws for review. So... That's what that really applies to based on the...
Small, medium, large projects?
Yeah, but that didn't clearly... When we went to apply the fee, it didn't really tell us what's a small and what's a large. So we had to make a determination.
Right, so I think that's what we're trying to clear up. Because when they came up, that was...
Is that the zoning?
No.
Small subdivision is defined as a proposed subdivision meeting all of the following conditions. A, creation of no more than two building lots. B, proposed street length of no more than 400 feet. C, street is proposed to be privately owned and maintained. And D, on municipal services to... On municipal services to provided only edge of public way. So in other words, the plow and goes right by the small subdivision.
What are you reading that off of, Bob?
And the fee schedule.
The fee schedule as of December 5th, 2017.
That should be in your packet there, Jim.
Yeah.
The middle of the page, Jim.
Special permit with site plan approval. Yeah, so we just had a flat.
What are you questioning, Jim?
No, I wasn't, I was just concerned about the... So basically, they're saying if it's... See, that doesn't make sense either. Just because it's maintained by the, it could be a huge subdivision that requires creation of no more than two building lots.
It was on page 57, Jay, if you were looking at the bylaws.
Yeah, 57, okay. Subdivision bylaws, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you in the subdivision bylaws? It's at the end. I think there's a sticky on it at the very end there or something.
Yeah, I know there's a schedule there of fees. And I know there was a different, what do you charge per lot? And the charge per lot was different than a large subdivision than a small subdivision. And we end up charging Munson Ridge the small subdivision or something.
Well, see, now technically, if we go further into our plan to change some of the bylaws, if we're looking at common driveways, now all of a sudden, we're creating small subdivisions.
With common driveways? And the definition...
Common driveways first. Yeah.
Two building lots.
Going at...
No more than two building lots. It's a small subdivision.
You are correct.
Maybe it would be a medium one then.
Maybe it would be a medium one, yes.
Well, a small subdivision. Where's a medium subdivision?
But then we have to, then we have to define the medium.
I don't think there's a definition.
That's where this question came from. What is, we have a definition as what's a small subdivision. We don't have a definition for a medium or large. We have a fee schedule for small, medium, large, but we don't have a definition for small.
That's correct. Because if we look down here and we were charging for lots, I got it there.
That's the same, it's this here. I just retyped it so you could actually follow it.
That's good, because I really can't see that for something.
Follow it larger?
No, that's what I, that's the fee schedule that I put in your packet is the one that I retyped that, what you just said. Because you couldn't quite follow it. The lines weren't lining up.
Would that make, would that make sense? Is that what we're looking at? I, because I mean, we have a fee structure for a small, medium and large project. We only have a definition...
For a small.
For a small. So if you don't meet the definition for a small, do you therefore become a medium?
Or a large.
Or a large.
I'd say we go right to a large.
Small and large?
Yeah, because once you go past the two, the two homes, you're creating full, you're creating a full subdivision. Where if you turn this, because it's covered, if it's privately owned and maintained. And after that, it goes to, it would be publicly owned and maintained.
And you go into a real subdivision. Now, why? On those form, we've got a small subdivision, $500 plus $100 per lot. Two lines, not the next line, but the next line below that one, small subdivision, $1,000 plus $200 per lot.
Now, that one has, yeah, I, that's, I believe what...
What's in there? Let's see that.
Well, she has it.
Jim's got his own. Jim's got his own. But I think that's why it was brought up, because it wasn't explaining it on what's already in the bylaws.
Right, well, we were trying to calculate how much we charge per lot, which is based upon, that's not me, I got my speakers off.
Was it the TV?
Most of it.
But it's in, well, this, I mean, so this is a proposed change then?
Right.
Or is that so, or proposing?
That's, that's, that's what's being proposed.
Okay.
Because the only thing that's, right, the only thing that's in there is the...
Right, so this is, this is current then, if I'm right, if I'm going to say a small subdivision is $500 plus $100 per lot.
Wait a minute, this, these fees aren't even making sense.
Special permit with site plan approval. Okay, if you flip this over, the fee schedule over, on the top, the second one down, special permit with site plan approval, just had one, that was the $400 plus $10 a square foot, plus, square foot of structures. Then the question came up, well, what about anything bigger? There wasn't anything in there for that. So that's what this particular change is about.
Yeah, this isn't, the small, small, medium, and large isn't about subdivision at all, I don't believe.
No.
I don't think so, that's right.
Fee schedule.
Yeah.
That's what we're changing, the current bylaw that has the fee schedule with special permit with site plan approval. It just has one blanket amount.
Which isn't really subdivision then, right?
Right, we'd be talking solar.
Well, but if you look at the proposed change, it doesn't say subdivision, it says small projects.
It's just on the subdivision bylaws, that's what, I guess where we're stuck, because up top it says subdivision bylaws.
Oh, because that's where the...
Just saying, well, we get confused here.
It's to make sure you're really paying attention and reading this.
So it's not, it's not really a subdivision bylaw, it is a proposed change to a project.
To a fee schedule.
For a fee, right, for a fee schedule as far as project. So what do we, again, so what do we determine to be a small project and a project large project?
I guess that would be by square footage.
So, for instance, the solar park was a small project, media project, large project.
The one we just approved, I would say that was a large project.
Okay, why?
Because it encompassed, was it three and a half acres?
Fifteen, fifteen acres. I think it's about 15 acres.
It was 15.
Yeah.
So we have to look at what, okay, so that we declare to be a large project. So I think that's what we're saying is, that's our structure, but we don't, we couldn't charge for a large project, project at the time, because we didn't have that.
Right.
We just had for a small. That's what I think we're saying is that, how we, everything's being charged as a saying where something is much larger is not being charged correctly.
So then the square footage, let's just stay with the solar, since that's what we're talking about right now, would that be the solar panels and not the foundations?
Yeah, because if we only charge for the foundations, so that would never add up to much at all.
Right.
No, but that's, but that's, that's what we're charging, 10 cents per square foot on all projects, again, so what do we, how do we decide what is a small project versus a medium and a large project?
Mm-hmm.
Because we were saying before, is that we're changing, we're charging one fee, and it says small project, $400.
I got a suggestion.
So just for all projects, that is $400 regardless of size?
I got a suggestion for that. Why don't one of us take an action, if you want, it'll be me, I'll check the other towns on how they define what is small, medium, and large, instead of recreating the wheel, and take a look at it and see what do we like.
And I was, yeah, I was going to say up to a half acre, small, half to one acre, medium, past one acre, but it's worthy to...
And then maybe they make them up?
Right.
I mean, I don't have a problem if I was...
Then we have to define acre.
Yeah, builder's acre or a real acre.
A what?
Builder's acre is 40,000 square feet, which is smaller than a real acre.
Well, I think what came up, I think, because we're looking at project size and our bylaws only has, the fee schedule only says small projects.
Right, so, and that was before the solar business came about.
What?
This would be like the one that was before us tonight, that would have been a small project for a hearing for a site plan approval, if it qualified for it.
Mm-hmm.
That would have been a small...
And I think what, if I remember correctly, what the board's concern was, it said a small project, we had nothing else that said anything but any other project.
Right.
You know, the word small needed to be there, it was just a project.
Well, if Jay wants, if Jay wants to take a look and see what other towns might be doing, so be it.
If they have a definition of small, medium, and large.
Right.
And then we can move on to the next item.
Which is fine, yep. So Jay, you okay with that?
Yeah, I got no problem with that, I just see, instead of recreating the wheel and spinning our own.
Yeah.
And see what everybody, everybody else has defined.
And see, I mean, towns that resemble...
Resemble us, I'm not going to Boston and all that, you know what I mean?
No, I didn't mean Boston, I mean like other towns.
I know, resemble to us.
Yes.
I bet your town had, we have field.
Even some in the Berkshires.
I mean, they're even bigger than we are, you know, as far as...
I don't think Half Field does.
Not Half Field, but, you know, I wouldn't say like Habley's nobody that like us.
But Habley may have some kind of a guideline.
Yeah.
Because they do so many projects, they have a small, medium, and large that they're worth looking at.
Check what I have.
At that.
But I'm wondering, what are the large projects are in Habley or not, and stuff like that, but yeah, definitely. Jay, can you take 30, 40 towns, Jay, if you could?
I think I'll get you three, and then the fourth will be Pioneer Valley.
I was wondering, would you maybe Pioneer Valley? Let me answer that.
I was going to...
They may have a...
This question.
They probably have everybody's, and they can just...
Because they write a lot of them for a lot of the towns, so I was going to ask them, how do they define a large, small, and medium project?
Yeah.
Yeah. Fair enough. Move right along.
Next one.
I got one thing I would throw out here, maybe it'll do something for us.
You sticking with the script?
Well, we're in bylaws, I'm staying with bylaws. I just wanted to jump ahead to the marijuana bylaw, I had an idea. The way the committee wrote the solar bylaws, they said that the solar can be anywhere in the town, but if it went over 250 KWs or more, it needs a special permit. That's one reason I asked the chief, what's the maximum marijuana plants per household allowed, if it's 10 or 12? Would that be our cutoff point? If you go one plant above that, you need a special permit, and we can do them one-on-one.
Yeah, that's fine, we just have to, we have to know where it's going to be allowed in the zone.
Well, when you get into the agricultural part, it's allowed anywhere in Grammy, just about, that's, that's the problem I saw. So that's why I thought it'd be better if we addressed them one by one.
Why don't you grow it anywhere?
You can do agricultural about anywhere in Grammy. That's it. It's an agricultural town, and if they start growing marijuana, they can grow it anywhere.
You're going, but I think it still law pertains to a certain amount you can grow. Just because you have a farm, I don't think you just go out and start growing $300.
Well, no, on that pamphlet they had, which needs a canopy, which didn't need a canopy, and all that, they decided.
Right, there's, there's guidelines in place, even where right the farm, town, there's also guidelines in place as far as marijuana.
Oh, I'm not saying there isn't, I'm just trying to find a way that we could best address it, and I'm using the solar as an example, that's all I'm saying.
No.
If anything over 250 KW for solar has to come here for a special permit. So if the maximum allowed by household was 10 plants, grown, manufactured, whatever, we can say anything 11 plants or more require a special permit, and we can address it as required, depending where it is. That's why I just throwing it out there, see what sticks, try to find the easiest way out of this.
Uh-huh.
And think about it, you don't have to decide now.
No, no, I'm thinking about it, you can...
See, that way you can look at the location they are, you could do anything you wanted to, because it's a special permit, they can do it anywhere.
Well, we're going to have meetings on that anyway, so...
Yeah, I just wanted to throw that out to think about it, and that's the easiest way out of it, but again, Pioneer Valley may come out, but I will tell you, Larry did tell me that they are probably going to run about 90 days behind us on their work, because they're using that statute they put in.
When we get back to this.
So addability to charge consultant fees. So do we have that written somewhere?
Yes, it's in the regular bylaws.
Yeah, it's in the regular bylaws, but it's not in the fee schedule. So I think we, we need to spell it out.
So we want to add it to the fee schedule, so if someone's, look at the fee schedule, they know we can charge additional for consultant fees.
They're on the hook for any, any expense incurred by the town that goes above and beyond the...
And maybe this is something that can be added to what we're doing with Pioneer Valley planning, that we got the DLTA grant for, it can be spelled out in the...
Permits.
Yeah, the flow chart.
We have a meeting tomorrow on that, tomorrow afternoon?
Yeah, yes, we do.
Right here.
That's why I said at the last meeting, this is all going to be combined together, because any bylaw changes had better be put into that pamphlet, brochure, or whatever you want to call it, so it all has to be done relatively the same amount of time. And they close that, according to Larry, 31 December, but our marijuana stuff with bylaws closes 30 November.
So the consultant fees, are you suggesting that Jay checked with Pioneer Valley too on that, to see how they listed? Or was that just something I made up in my head?
We've already got it in the...
It's in our bylaws, but it's not on our fee schedule.
We're looking, so I think we talked before about our fee schedule, so if someone comes in, they know what is being charged, each...
So Jay's going to review with a few towns what they're doing, plus Pioneer Valley, he'll come back to the board with, with what some of the other towns are doing, and then when we make a decision, we can put base fee, based on what comes up, and then we can add the rest of it.
Right.
They're on the hook for anything other, above and beyond.
So that's, that's, I guess, we're just going to have a discussion, we're going to...
You're not going to, you're not going to make it a separate heading like the, like the...
Like the bylaw...
...advisement review, legal draft by town council, inspection fee, blah, blah, blah.
I don't think, because if we did that, we're going to miss something.
I don't even know that we could do that, because fees are always changing.
That's true.
That's true, that's probably why it wasn't in there.
I think Jim's generic one works the best.
I think it does, it would be added into that, that part where it comes down, project size, plus any...
And if we can roll it into that DLTA.
Above them, yeah.
And it doesn't have to, it doesn't have to be fine print either.
No.
So, we're not doing any things with the bylaws with that then? It's in the bylaw already that we can charge consultant's fees?
That is affirmative, it's in the town bylaws, voted on by the people, and approved.
But we're going to, we're going to insert it everywhere throughout the fee schedule, so it probably does need to be going to the...
Fee schedule? So we're going to wait to decide that after...
After Jay comes back with...
Small, medium, and large.
His homework. Next? Next is add a 20-day appeal period for special permits for mass law under section D, notices and certifications.
Right, because the Massachusetts general law says, there's a 20-day appeal period for if somebody wants to appeal our approval of the special permit.
Okay.
And currently, it's not in here.
It's not in our bylaw at all?
Not in our bylaw.
No, and so I put any detail on what section this should go in in the bylaws, and that's, that's the...
I guess my question, if it's a mass general law, does it need to be in our bylaws?
It's in our bylaws.
Should, should this be...
I think Jim is correct.
It's in our bylaws.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is, because it talks about the grace period, the 35 days to everybody we send to, if they don't reply to it, they have no objection.
A 20-day appeal for special permit, so it's got to be under the special permit section.
Yeah, that'd be paragraph six, something.
So why is it here as a line item then?
Because somebody probably didn't know it at the time, they didn't.
All five of us? We all have the answer now?
I don't know how far this goes back.
They must have been busy on that meeting, I was absent.
You guys want me to open that up for the screen too, and you'll just search for it?
Yeah, why don't you keep looking for that, Jay? Or we move on to the next one.
So what are we doing with this?
Jay's going to look, see if he can find it in the bylaws.
I'm pretty sure it's in there.
I know it's in there.
Yeah, I do too, I'm reading it.
We'll find it, please, if you can.
I'm, I'm pretty sure it's paragraph 6.3 or something.
I'm pretty sure, yeah, I think so, yeah, I remember, yep.
Yep, 6.2, I'm sorry, I'm off one, and it's on, it's like page 95 or something like that.
6.2, special permit?
Yep, 6.2, right here, special permit.
But is that included?
Yes, pull it up.
I'm pulling it up now. I know it's in there, but I've read it. Alex is getting bored over there.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next one, while Jay's looking. Shrink Village Center Zone to Improve Business Opportunities.
This one goes back to when Pam was on the board. She had suggested, I'm not sure where the Village District starts, down here on 202.
Just the side of Chateau.
Okay. If I remember correctly, Pam had said, maybe we want to change it to where it starts right here at Ferry Hill, meet that area, open up that area for a general business district, and how far?
It goes to just, just before the safety complex, I believe, right?
All the way down to Lyman Street, I think that was the cutoff.
Then how was the public safety complex out of the historical district?
It has been, that's been, that wasn't in the historic district from the beginning.
Oh, so when did it get expanded?
No, what was expanded was the overlay.
Oh, okay.
The Village Center.
What you call the Village Center, okay, so I'm thinking two different things here.
Are we looking to shrink the Village Center Zone?
I'd like to see what, see what it is.
Did you find that, that other one, Jay?
What one do you, on the bylaw, 20 days?
The mass general law.
I'd have to go into chapter 48 to find it there.
But no, it says, but they said it's, you said it's in the bylaws, that's why I want to see it.
Well, that's why I'm looking at.
Special permit?
I'm in 6.2 now.
But that was the question, have you found it yet?
When I find it, you will know.
Okay, let me know.
Okay, I will let you know.
Don't distract them.
We'll start, we'll stop asking.
Okay, why don't we come back to the Village Center?
Yeah, we'll come back to that one too.
Well, before we come back, to me, that's just been rezoned a couple years ago, with everything we've got, everything that we're proposing, I would backburner that between the, what we're doing with the marijuana issues and all the other ones, I don't think that's a priority right now.
Okay. But I'll leave it on there and just say to be reviewed later, had a later date?
All right, anyway, have any concerns with that?
You okay with that, Jay?
I'm not even listening, I'm reading.
Okay, you're out. You're out.
Jay, did you find that yet? Develop exempt use section that permits exempt use by right, but still requires site plan approval. I'm not really sure what that means.
I'm wondering what spurred that.
See, Massachusetts general law, chapter 48, section 9. I was right on the chapter. Question is, is where is it in our bylaws?
Section 17. Chapter 48, section 17, and filed within 20 days after the date. You have that there?
I know it was 48.
Don't disturb Jay, he's looking. He'll tell us when he finds it.
I think it was just some wording that needed to be added to what's there.
Could be. At the top, it says need detail what section this should go in the bylaws.
Yeah.
What section should it go into?
622, what's under 622?
Special permit procedures.
Then mention section 9.
622 is right here. And it just refers to chapter 48, section 9.
But if you go past the application, this is after when, after the decision's been made.
Right, this is the appeal process.
Right, it's after the decision's been made.
That's the criteria, yeah.
Okay, there's chapter 48, section 11. Criteria.
This is, yeah, this is deciding on it, but it's not what happens after.
We'll keep on going.
Granting a special permit, the special permit under 6.28 in accordance with 48. Limitations such conditions.
Isn't that...
I bet that doesn't have anything.
That has to do with the decision.
Right. Site plan approval.
See, that goes in the site plan. We leave 6.2. 6.2 is strictly on special permits.
Yeah, so there's nothing in there about that then? About what happens after the approval.
Maybe that's why we wanted to add it into the bylaw.
Yep.
Maybe that is the law, but we were just saying at that time it should be, I mean...
So that would be 6.2, 6.30?
Yeah, 6.30 is site plan.
No, 6. right there, sub, 6.2.6.29, whatever it is.
Yeah, 6.29 here is changes, alterations, and expansions.
So if we do a 6.30 after that...
Well, see, you're gonna bump into it right down here. You have to go...
So you'd have to list it as a 1, 2, or 3 condition?
Right, 6.29.1 or something like that.
Well, it could say 6.219s, alterations, expansions, and appeals. And this says one of the, that's the appeal.
Yeah.
Okay, final approval guaranteed.
So 6.29.1, that'll be, right? Or something like that?
Which one are we?
You found it?
Yeah. Final approval, if granted, shall be endorsed on the original drawing on the definitive plan by the signatories of the majority of the planning board, but not until the statutory 20 days of appeal period has elapsed.
What paragraph is that?
5.04. Nope, 5.05, paragraph 3.
Nope, oh no, go ahead, ignore me. 5.05?
Yep.
Paragraph?
Section 3.
Section?
Oh, wait a minute.
Fourth paragraph, try here.
That doesn't look the same as what he's got up there.
No, it doesn't look the same.
Two?
Easements. It's under approval modification or disapproval, number three.
You should just follow her sticky with the arrow moving on side.
Are we looking at zoning bylaws and we're looking at subdivision bylaws?
That's the zoning bylaws you're in.
This is zoning, I'm in.
I'm sorry, the subdivision you're in, right here.
This is subdivision.
Subdivision bylaws.
Okay, I'm in zoning.
It applies to both.
Pardon?
It applies to both, it applies to any hearing. Anything that requires a hearing.
So it's already in there, so we don't need to do it?
Correct.
Well, the question is, you want it in zoning as well as the subdivision?
Right, well, maybe that's what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Because when we're looking at zoning, we always don't go to subdivisions.
Right, we're just talking about adding it in there so people are aware of it, that's all.
And if we look back down to 6.29...
Yeah, 6.29.
We can bullet it in.
I don't see an issue with adding it in there.
And this is the actual...
So people just go to the appeal process, if they're looking at that area, they'll know what the appeal process is.
Yeah. And that would be, if you do 6.29, you're gonna keep it under special permits because 6.2 is all about special permits.
Right.
That's the only thing that would qualify, the appeal period.
You're right.
We'd have to have a hearing.
Right.
Do you wanna see that?
All right.
All right.
So we're gonna add to 6. right, to 6.29 now, right?
Right, you could go 6.29, it could be changes, alterations, expansion.
So that one sentence that's there will be number one, and this would be number two.
Yes. I was thinking you gotta add in changes, alterations, expansions, appeals.
I agree.
Because that's the heading, 6.29.
So I'll put karma appeals right here.
Right. And then you can have number one, blah, blah, then number two.
Per mass general law, section D, blah, blah, blah.
Yep, okay.
Okay, great.
All right.
Founding right along.
What happened to develop an exempt use of section that permits exempt use by right, still requires a site plan approval?
I'm not sure where we came up with that and what the instance was.
Something must have came up.
Yeah.
We had the sidewalks now? Or which one we had?
Develop an exempt use section that permits exempt use by right. That doesn't make...
Which one are we under, what number? If I can catch up with it.
Develop an exempt use section that permits exempt use by right, but still requires a site plan approval.
You can have both.
That is like said.
Site plan approval, site plan approval, right?
Get that open and so we figure out what...
Yeah.
Why don't we just move on to the sidewalks?
More research on that one.
I say we have to make an ADA.
So what's the more research, or what are we doing to be...
Because we leave it open, see what we, I mean, no one really knows what we were talking about at that particular time, so we don't...
Okay.
Yeah, because we have to go back into, I think it's in the subdivision where it requires a 3/8 of an inch pitch, but ADA requires a quarter of an inch, so we gotta change it in there.
Right. So we just follow ADA?
Should we just take that out, sidewalks shall be pitched, sidewalks shall meet ADA standards?
This is...
To me, that sounds better because if they change ADA standard...
We don't gotta worry about changing the bylaw again.
Well, this is what we've got here, you've got it, oh, you don't have it. No, you got a sidewalk, okay, so here's what we've got for sidewalks.
Right, so what we're concerned is that walk shall be pitched 1/4 inch to the foot, which is the ADA standard is...
That's the ADA standard.
I mean, that is ADA standard, 1/4 inch.
Yes, in the subdivision, it says 3/8 of an inch. If you go into, because we have that with Munson Ridge.
Actually, we ended up with that in roadway too.
Yes, in the roadway as well, the road is 3/8 of an inch crowning.
So are we looking, maybe there came, yeah, that's the subdivision bylaws.
It obviously came up when we were looking at Munson Ridge.
Right.
Page... Sidewalks. Page 21.
Actually, isn't the...
Except that they're not numbered.
What, do you want me to go to subdivision there?
Follow the sticky ones, follow the sticky ones.
Okay, subdivision here, that's the fee schedule.
Yeah, that's what I picked that up, that's out of the subdivision, 1/4 inch it says right now.
We have a quarter inch?
Yep.
Well, let's see, what's the ADA?
ADA is a quarter inch.
Right.
So it says more inch.
Then it's, was it just the crowning of the road, Bob, where it says 3/8?
Yeah, but we specifically, sidewalks here, but yes.
Two different issues. Right, I know there's two different issues.
But I believe there was something that was said as well about...
Right.
Grammy Reg says 3/8 per foot pitch from the crown to the gutter. And it was brought up that we could only do quarter inch because of ADA roadway. I'm not sure about the sidewalk, apparently the sidewalk is already in compliance with what's in our bylaws.
Does our bylaws say that?
Yeah.
Yeah, because Munson Ridge wanted a variance on the 3/8 to comply with ADA.
Right.
That's how it came out.
Mm-hmm. So we don't even have to worry about this proposed bylaw change because it's already in the bylaws.
Yeah, but you wanna open the can of worms and do the crowning of the road?
No, you can't crow... The road crowning has nothing to do with ADA. That's not a pedestrian right of way. Specifically about sidewalks, that's a pedestrian's right of way, not the road. Two different issues.
And I believe somebody did bring it up during the public hearing.
It was brought up with the sidewalk ramp in a crossway.
Yep. I, boy, I thought there was something about the crown of the road to the gutter. We have 3/8 of an inch per foot. And that state law says it has to be quarter, ADA says it has to be quarter.
Not on the crown, I don't believe. I don't remember having that conversation. I thought it was just a ramp from the sidewalk to the...
You haven't been researching, we picked it up from the minutes?
We can't, but I mean, is there a concern with adding that into our sidewalk bylaw? Whenever, wherever that comes up, as we add in there, must meet ADA. It must be in compliance with ADA. We can actually spell it out, but that way it's always there. Because that's what we're saying, we're saying our sidewalks need to be in compliance with that by bylaw.
I think the easiest way is if I go back and research Munson Ridge on one of the variances they requested because our bylaws were not in compliance. And they had written that up and we said, yeah, you can have that because we're wrong in the town. And that has to be a change to the bylaw.
Yeah, but our bylaws aren't gonna supersede ADA.
No, you're right, but I'm just saying that people from Munson Ridge brought it up to our attention that our bylaws were not correct.
They were saying our bylaws didn't meet ADA.
That's correct.
So what's, do we, that's what I'm saying, is do we just add into our bylaw in regards to sidewalks that they meet, or they're in compliance with ADA?
I think it just be in compliance with ADA, and if ADA changes, we change with it automatically.
Well, I think it's, I think it's, yeah.
Instead of A, B, and C that we've got here?
Instead of stating a quarter inch, it should say ADA compliant.
Well, because that's what, you know, are we looking at anything besides that? I think it's all one spot, so that'd be four feet wide?
Four feet wide, yes.
So it would should be not less than four feet in width.
All right, so what does ADA say that ADA?
Four feet, not less than four feet.
If you go, it's just we could change our bylaw, then it'd always be current.
Because you know the boards that we put in front of the electric vehicle charger? They had to be four feet. So ADA compliant, so they can get wheelchair in it.
So do we just do that, so it's just...
That's fine, just put it in there.
Well, or you could just, the alignment of sidewalks in relation with the roadway shall be determined by the board. Is that also an ADA issue too?
And that's not what we got in the other one.
No.
That's for inside the house.
We have a tree belt between the edge of road and the edge of sidewalk. Or are we having a, is the sidewalk right against the backside of the curb? And then a tree belt? I think that's what alignment means, alignment of sidewalk.
So do you wanna add like a D to this? Or do you wanna just put a little thing in the beginning up here saying sidewalk should be constructed in compliance with ADA requirements?
I think that's long since added into it.
You can put it like right at the beginning. And then you got these others here.
I'm fine with that, I mean, we got this all drafted up anyways, we gotta review it before we submit it anyways, so... If you wanna do that, then I'm okay with that.
Are you gonna redline all the changes?
I can do that.
Okay.
Add, allow up to five estate lots via, yeah, via special permit.
Now you're in the zoning bylaws.
Move right along.
Moving right along, okay.
Zoning bylaws.
What paragraph are you in zoning now?
Page 55, section 5.4.
5.4.
Single family dwelling, estate lots.
So that is here. It's page 50, yeah, page 55, section 5.4.1. Says no more than two estate lots.
Were you allowed to five?
You in zoning, right?
Yes. Yes.
Page 55.
Yeah, 5.4 and then 5.41.
Is that why we're going up to five?
No more than two estate lots.
There was that.
Old Hill?
Yes.
There's three lots.
Yep.
And then we started talking about it. Pioneer Valley, open space, they're starting to push some more, they're gonna have to cut back on the subdivision.
Yep.
But again, it's based on special permit.
Right.
And there's a note there, should look at the rest of the add section in case you wanna change any other detail on estate lots, section 540 through 546.
Yeah, I got them up on the board.
Which is, yeah, all of those. And you have that in your pack then?
Well, I think we're all in agreement that no more than two estate lots may be adjacent to each other on the street line. And if you're gonna have more estate lots than that, there was talk that they wanted to increase the number from two on up.
Well, yeah, since we wanna increase it to up to five.
That's right.
By special permit.
By special permit.
By special permit. That way we get full control at all times because it has to come through us with special permit, which is a public hearing. I mentioned the same thing on the other one. We can address it with each other separately every single time by having to make it into a special permit.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that, add that in.
The question... The question becomes, if you have two estate lots, no special permit, two estate lots side by side. No special permit is required. All they have to do is an AMR.
That's correct.
Okay, so the next third neighbor decides to sell three estate lots. Here are two more estate lots, or two additional estate lots.
Which is it?
Well, what I'm trying to do is get it out where, are we making the assumption on this potential change? That it's all under common owner, the property is all under single ownership at the time that the subdivision of the property is being made?
It could be under one ownership.
See, I don't, I don't think we have any standing if there's two parcels owned by two different individuals. And they each want to put.
Two estate lots.
I don't, I don't think we have, I don't think we can.
Well, and that got blown out. That happened here in this town and it went to court. And the courts, one gentleman said, well, basically because this other property has two estate lots, you can't do it here on.
On yours.
On the next property, that's like a taking. And the court did indeed agree. I don't know if you were on the board or not.
I know what happened. It happened right off of State Street, West State Street.
Agreed with who?
Or East State Street.
Town agreed with?
Planning board. The planning board was taking the task and lost.
And lost, right.
Well, right, because I have to say, so if I'm the homeowner, if I'm the property owner here and Bob's here, well, because Bob beat me to the punch, she got the two and I wouldn't get it.
Right. That is, that is what the planning board told the person, the adjacent neighbor when he came into.
To me, that's not fair. You can't say he can have it, I can't because they beat me to it.
The planning board did do that indeed.
The farm.
Farm. Yeah.
But isn't that the same thing as 5.41?
More than two estate lots?
Well, I don't believe that is the same.
This is more, this is more pertaining to one person owning the property, correct?
This could be one person or it could be more than one person. It's saying no more than two estate lots on the street.
No, no, because that's just it. You have two property owners. Bob wanted to have two estate lots and I want to have two estate lots. That's, that's fine.
That's two separate properties.
But it has to be defined. That's what the old planning board was trying to hang their hat on. You can't have.
But they lost.
That is true.
So what, we're trying to hang a hat on what?
If we define it. And that.
I understand this to be as to one particular property owner. So if I own a particular property and I want to go more than two, have more than two estate lots, I have to get a special permit to do that.
So why does it have to be only one property owner?
I, I don't read it that way.
I don't either.
No more than two estate lots may be adjacent to each other at the street line. Whether you own it, I own it.
As a single family dwelling, but let's go back to what we just got done saying. It went to court and the planning board lost. So the judgment was against the planning board. So why would we try to?
Well, we would agree with it. This planning board collectively would agree with it, but what happens in the future? With another planning board?
But that's what I'm, that's what I guess what it's saying. I don't, the law says that, not the law, but. To me, I look at this pertains to one property owner. And I go back to what I'm saying before, and I know what you're saying, because you beat me to the punch of having two estate lots, how is that fair to me? Because I own my property, I have the right to have estate lots too.
Yeah, but I could have two estate lots and sell one to Bob and sell one to Jim after I've come through here. They're still both going to be single family dwellings.
So what's your point?
Yeah, what's your point?
Point is, it says per street.
First, at the street line?
At the street.
Right, not per street.
That's right, at the street line. So the thing that is, it's got nothing to do with who owns the property.
Well, you know what, we're discussing this, but the real proposed change is to allow up to five estate lots.
Right.
Right.
So maybe that's what we really should be discussing rather than beating.
Well, that's what I'm asking. But that's what I'm asking, so if any of you.
So basically, no more than five estate lots without site plan approval.
No more than how many?
Five.
Five. B O A R.
With site plan.
Of two, five.
Right, right.
So no more than five.
So two, you wouldn't need site plan approval?
Allow anything above, the bylaw reads two right now. So we're proposing allow up to five, so three, four, or five would require any consecutive. Estate lots above the two would require a special permit.
Okay.
So you have to word it as such.
Site plan approval.
So you're leaving the two in there?
Site plan approval?
Yeah, you could still have the two.
But you're leaving the wording.
What if there's lens two and then it would be my three, four, and five?
You're back, you're back to the same thing again.
And I guess that was the point I was trying to make.
There's.
Because it's not owned by the same person. And anything over two.
But there's still a way around that. You can separate the land, deed it differently, and still get it.
Yeah.
So we're saying, it's going to happen anyway. Why not put something around it where we can?
Have some say.
Yeah.
So we want to make a simple change that we can have up to five estate lots in a row. No matter who owns them. And this comes under a special permit.
But what about two?
Not a special permit, site plan.
Site plan.
What's that, two?
Well, are you changing 5.41 to two, from two to five? Because that doesn't say with.
No, you can still have the two with, the two estate lots without site plan approval. Anything above and beyond that would require up to five.
So we need to add that?
Yes.
Then you would have to lose the.
You have to word it a little different.
No more than two estate lots without site plan approval.
Correct.
And then lose maybe adjacent to each other at the street line. Because now we're saying we want to consider going to five.
Okay, so no more than two estate lots without site plan.
I would, I would take no more than two. I would leave two estate lots may be adjacent to each other at the street lines. Additional, additional estate lots.
Require.
Up to five would require special.
Why even go up to five? Just say additional estate lots require site plan approval, leave it at that. And then you have the leniency of doing what you wanted to.
Because you could have someone, depending who's on the board that time, you could have ten. It's got to be cut off. I mean, this is something that the town's got a load on.
You know, maybe what we have to do is, we have to tailor the number of estate lots to where we get into the common driveway thing.
I think.
Two different issues. I would, I wouldn't, I would not, you can, you can determine that if they present it to you on their site plan. It leaves, it leaves the, it leaves it open for discussion. I wouldn't get into, I wouldn't complicate it. Only one driveway, it already. Our bylaws already state each dwelling, each building lot has to have its own.
Own access.
Access.
Okay.
And then if someone wants to come to us and say, look, they still have their own access, but we want a common driveway, well, that's a deed thing. That's, that's got nothing to do with, with us. They want to do something between themselves after the fact. Or not, that we wouldn't have any.
Well, explain to me anyway, on these bylaw changes, because I haven't been involved in any. What do we do? Come up with a rough draft and then we send it off to the town council to?
You can go to council or you can go straight to public hearing and then public meeting. But the bottom line, even if the people voted in, it's got to pass the attorney general's blessing.
But isn't that where the town council would come in to say, this is, this is not the correct wording? And I suggest you change.
But not.
To those or?
Yeah, but not everything has to go to town council or he'd make a million dollars and we'd be broke. We can make our own decisions without him. If we want to send something to town.
Well, that's what, and that's what I'm asking, Jim. When the bylaws were changed before, who reviewed them before they were presented at town meeting or a public hearing first, then town meeting?
They were, they were approved at a public hearing.
But didn't Larry Smith help you go through them?
Yeah, but that's not, that's not a legal council. That's no. Can I go to the AG's office for approval if it's, if it's in fact approved?
But there was another set of eyes other than the five sets here reviewing the wording.
No.
Larry Smith or?
Well, Larry was, yeah, the consultant was involved.
It's a consultant.
Yeah, so you get the wording from here.
Right.
I mean, if we choose to do that and have town council review it prior to, that's fine too.
I didn't know, I didn't know if that's.
Town council is not a requirement, that's all I'm saying. It's not a requirement.
Okay.
We could choose it if we want to, but it's not a requirement.
I understand. Just make sure the wording is correct. That's all we want to do.
Before it gets to the AG and I guess.
Well, they could tweak it again afterwards anyway. There's no sense sending it to them until it's been approved by the town.
Oh, sure.
Then they, what they've done in the past is they've kicked certain articles back for wording, for wording or completing.
They say recommend do this, recommend do that.
The AG just, yeah, so.
So what are we doing here? We are doing 5.41. We're changing it to, are we starting out with no more than? Are we talking?
I would take that out. I would take no more than. I would start off with two estate lots may be adjacent to each other at the street line. And then add in.
Without site plan approval.
Without site plan approval. Additional lot, additional, additional estate lots up to five can be approved with.
Require.
Well, additional estate lots up to five require site plan approval.
Correct.
Including the first. I mean, do you want seven estate lots?
No, that's not what it's saying. No more than. Two estate lots may be adjacent to each other at the street line. Any additional lots up to a total, up to five.
We put up to a total of five if you wish. I mean, if you want to.
Would require site plan approval. Planning board.
Yeah. So additional estate lots up to a total of five require, so that sounds to me too like it's, you're getting seven and all.
Yeah. You're allowing two to go through without a site, without a site plan.
But.
If you go over to.
Starting with number three, you need site plan approval?
Yes, three, four, and five, you need site plan approval.
Or because you're doing site plan approval for say three, four, and five, it's also going to include one and two?
One and two can go through.
So how do you determine the order?
I really will.
Because really, we just take it down to one site, one individual, single family dwelling. The only difference between this and a one single family dwelling is you're allowing two estate lots, which are 80,000 square feet instead of 40,000 square feet, to exist. Without coming to us for site plan approval. That's all you're allowing. You're allowing two to coexist. Right, Jim? That's all you're doing.
Right.
But then you're putting a limit so they can't go two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, to a maximum. If you want to go three on the street line, you need site plan approval, three to five. And that gives the planning board the maximum they can do five.
To a total of five consecutive.
The planning board is maxed out at five. They can't go anymore.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Did I read it correctly, Jim?
Yeah. Also looking at. Okay, there it is, parallel to the street line, okay.
No, 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 at the street line. Okay, so we wanted to now say 5.41 would now say two estate lots may be adjacent to each other. At the street line without site plan approval. Additional estate lots up to a total of five consecutive estate lots require site plan approval. Now, do we need to add adjacent to each other, blah, 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 to that? Just to clarify that? Could it be any other way?
Yeah, I don't think it'd be any other way, right?
Adjacent to each other at the street line?
Well, if it says consecutive in there, then there would be no other way.
Bang, 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 bang.
Okay. Okay, John?
Well, the question is, I know we've talked about commercial estate lots.
That's next.
That's next.
I know it. That's what I'm saying. We're going to them next and we can just take what we got from single family dwelling into it. Except like Jim made a good point when Steve Carpenter wasn't here. Now you've got to take in consideration tractor trailers and stuff like that, which you would not take in consideration.
We would apply that under the special, under the site plan approval.
Yeah, we're looking at that though.
When this topic came up two years ago maybe. I had originally thrown out for discussion that maybe the access strip should be 50 feet wide. And everybody kind of seemed to go along with that. I however now want to rescind that thought. Let's keep estate lots equal whether they're residential or commercial. Because the roadway is typically 24, 28 feet.
Yeah, 26.
And if you've got a 40-foot access strip, you can get that in there, that kind of a road. And tractor trailers are involved, they're owned by each other here on 202 or whatever. But the reason I want to rescind my original 50-foot wide access strip thought is, let's just keep it easy, simple. An estate lot is an estate lot whether it be commercial or residential.
40 feet's plenty, I think.
Yeah. With an ADA, they all meet the same requirements, including.
No, starts.
These five estate lots.
The only problem I have with that is if you do two estate lots of 40-foot frontage. And as you stated, it doesn't make a difference if they're private or commercial. What happens if somebody tries to get in there and they don't need no site plan approval? They start putting tractor trailers and then they don't fit.
Well, because we'd be working under a business, this is commercial.
But you just said, it makes no difference whether it's single family dwelling or commercial. They'd be the same.
As far as the parameters go, lot sizes, there's still other conditions they have to meet.
Being met.
We're trying, we're trying to help the business district by allowing some businesses to go into some of the back lots.
I agree with that.
Now, that mainly pertains to 202.
Right.
So what would typically happen, the state's only going to allow so many curb cuts. So you may find a situation where two, two businesses estate lots go into, go into play. And the owner's going to say, we're going to put a common driveway in. Because the state's only going to allow, and that would be a deed thing between the two.
That wouldn't involve us.
No.
Because that involves the state because it's 202.
One curb cut back 40 feet or whatever and then, and then they could go their separate, again, it'd be subject to site plan approval, so we. Depending on the type of business, some businesses don't require large vehicles deliveries.
Yeah, but I was saying, we took the site plan approval away from the first two. That's all I'm stating.
No, but we're talking commercial business where it is required in our other bylaws that they have to come before us.
Okay, we were talking about making it the same. That's why I.
Me saying as far as up to five, what they're saying is there's.
But individually required.
Forty-footed access.
A single, a single business lot requires site plan, so it doesn't matter.
So back to the estate lots. It also said, look at the rest of the section in case you want to change any more detail.
I think, I think we were referring to common driveway.
So you're not going to change anything else and? So, you're not going to change anything else?
And now they have to always have their site plan approval to be done individually.
Let's take a quick look.
You got that with the sidewalks?
I'm sorry, what was that one?
That's, I'm sorry, that's 5.4, single-family dwelling estate lots. And that was a...
No, I was just thinking, we probably, at that time, we should review the whole thing, not just make the change.
I had just read it on the screen.
The question is, do you want to change anything else under section 5.4?
Under zoning 5.4. There you go.
Yeah, they're up on the screen again.
That easier for you, Alex?
I don't see any changes.
No, I'm okay with it.
Next one would be, add the LED lighting?
Yeah, because there's no LED lighting in there.
So, what happened to business estate lots?
The only change was...
We will add them.
Add.
We currently don't allow business estate lots.
So, we need definition in particulars.
Which would be the same as 5.4, single-family dwelling on estate lot.
Start off with... The only difference would be, that would be by special permit and site plan approval, because it's a business.
And no...
But it would have been already, correct?
Well, can we put that, we really can't do that.
So for the wording, are they still single, so it's not going to be single, it's going to be business estate lots?
Right.
Well, single-family dwellings on estate lots.
So it'll be business estate lots.
Shall be permitted in the which districts? RSRM, WSB, blah, blah, blah?
The GB and the mixed.
Mixed and...
The office, professional.
What is it over there on the road?
Industrial Street.
So the GB, what else?
Mixed.
Mixed use.
We're going to allow it in the mixed use.
Kind of have to. Business and, it was a business, so.
Mixed use and...
Yeah, because on mixed use, they could put a business on the first floor, and partners on the second floor.
Districts, so just those districts, right? They are subject to dimensional and density regulations as stipulated in table, section three, table two, table of dimensional.
You want me to pull it up?
Yeah. Just to make sure that applies to the business, too.
Whatever that contradicts what we're saying.
The area of each business lot excluding the access strip should be a minimum of 8,000 square feet.
What table, was it three?
Section three, table two.
Table two.
Table of dimensional and density regulations.
Table two.
So we'd have to change that.
Well, well...
Yeah, you wipe everything else out, or no, you...
That just says single-family, you could do the whole thing with business?
Yeah.
Right. So we want all of them to stay the same. Maximum stories, one two for a business. Maximum height, 35.
Side yard, side frontage and front yard, side yard, rear yard, and do all that? Okay.
I'd leave it all the same.
And if we find for a need to change it, then we will change it appropriately. There's no sense guessing what you want now unless you know.
And because it requires a special permit, along with, then you can always request, tell them that you need to move this over one way or the other.
Because with a special permit, you have the right to know along anything you want. That's why I like that for the road, I don't want to get it wrong.
Okay, so then the...
I go back to what Jay was kind of saying before, though, so if someone wanted to build something like apartments on the bottom, office space on the bottom, and apartments on top.
That'd be mixed.
It's mixed, so we're going to allow them to go two stories.
That's what Brooks Nealon, or Nealon Insurance is. Actually, I think the basement has an apartment as well. First floor, basement apartment, and seventh floor apartment.
He must have special conditions for the building, inspecting if he's going to have an apartment in the basement.
To walk out.
Yeah, for egress.
To walk out.
To walk out.
But he has to have two doors.
One at the top, one at the bottom, to walk out. Well, I assume he has one at the top, too.
So I'll take, just sees the same other conditions, and they also reference access strip examples of illustrations type one through four in appendix A.
Appendix A, okay, here we go. What page?
I don't know.
If you give me a page, that would be easier.
Appendix A is probably going to be way at the end.
Well, I know it's going to be at the end, but...
The apartments there on 202.
It is page 100.
Done by the senior senator. That would be complex.
Towne's, Stoney's, Stoney's?
Yeah, that's only two stories, huh?
That's all it's allowed in town, by the...
I thought that was only one story.
I think they put a two-story, and then one side or the other.
I don't see an appendix A under zoning.
The rest of them are all one-story.
I'm asking you on a page 102.
The rest are, they're all one-story.
Well, I mean, in the... Right here, appendix. The following pages contain illustrations type one through four, dah, 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 which were approved on that. But I don't see any appendices here.
Dated May 22, 1990, geez. Are those still in effect?
I think that that, I think the appendix is nothing more than drawings that illustrate the configuration of an estate lot.
I have no idea, because I can't see it.
I'm pretty sure.
So that was at the end of the...
There's still, that one's been changed.
Zoning bylaws, right?
And this is an exact copy of what you should have printed. I can go to PDF and see it's different, because this is the word, so I can search it.
Jay, go back, where are you, go back for a second.
Zoning bylaws, there we go.
Uh, zoning.
Yeah, I don't have anything past that either.
I didn't think you would, because I have exact copies.
This is in the old zoning bylaws.
Do you think that appendix needs to be deleted? Or not, I have no idea, because I don't know what it looks like, but it is referenced inside.
Yeah, this is what it is. These are the old bylaws.
So this is, okay, here's what should be there.
Apparently, that never made it. Another thing we've got to do is, on these bylaws, is we've got to put the page on the bottom of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which was asked to be done, and was never done.
That's not in there, that's what's posted, that's what's posted online, this is not included.
That's not included.
That's all, those are the old bylaws.
Here's estate lot number two?
So that's, that should be there, because that's actually still on the bylaw.
Yeah, it defines an estate lot.
Yeah, that's all, those should be added on somehow, and it went over to online, good.
And that'll still apply to the business ones?
Correct.
So we have the L B, the item?
Yes.
When it says on the subdivision limitations here, paragraph seven, does that mean they have to complete that entire subdivision in five years? The old plan said they had to complete the subdivision seven.
It doesn't say that, it says...
The provisions of this bylaw or subsequent amendments thereto shall be in effect. Any lot shown on the definitive subdivision plan for residences, which shall have been approved by the planning board after 1976, until a period of five years from the date of submission of subplan has elapsed. On plans prior in 1976, the limitation shall be seven years. I'm just saying, does that mean subdivision has to be completed in five years?
I'm wondering when that was put into place. Was it 1976?
Well, the subdivision, there weren't any subdivision bylaws until 1976.
Right, so that's when that came into place.
It says on plans prior in 1976, the limitation shall be seven years.
But that's what I'm going with that, if that came into place in 1976, how they put a restriction on it before 1976.
They couldn't, if it wasn't in place.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's why I...
There was no, yes, moving forward.
Because I mean, just looking at Munson Ridge, there's no way that's going to be completed in five years. I'm just gestating.
I think it's speaking to the right of mind, the public right of mind.
Should we clarify it, or just leave it as is? Because I don't know what it means to be...
The town has no control over the...
Here's the elimination.
Add LED lightings.
Okay, let us add it.
So what are the wattage numbers for the chart?
64.
No, just that what we said was on that chart, it didn't allow any LED lighting.
Right, it doesn't say LED lighting.
That's what we had to add.
So do we need to have an area, I mean, if you're adding that to the chart?
Well, no, because with lamp type, will be LED.
But what about this?
So we have to decide whether we consider what low illumination will be and high illumination will be.
What, low, medium, and high?
No, just low and high.
Because there is a low, medium, and high two LED lights.
Well, what I'm saying is that, our standards, we have a low, we have a high, we have no medium.
Low illumination area, you have, you should have that in your packet there. Just a single sheet.
So we, Bob thinks 64 is too high, so.
No, I have no clue.
Me either. So that's what we need to look at, as far as what...
Can you bring up that chart, Jay, it's on page 60?
Sure.
I mean, we want to add it, we can get more information in regards to what it should be as far as low and high.
Well, they have changed, too. Because the original LED light... What page is that, Lo?
Business lots.
6-0.
That was from Larry Smith, and I made an addition in there, but it kind of follows everything that was being set, have you seen that?
Bob would like to present this as exhibit B.
Oh, there's a chart up a little bit higher. There you go.
Right, so we did, I think we just need to find out what we want.
Right.
To have a low and a high.
So who knows?
I, I have no clue, but it is...
No idea.
Is that a check with Larry Smith thing?
Well, we can get it ourselves from the energy committee.
Right, we can determine what we want it to be.
Because right now, there's a new standard for LED lights, because the original LED lights that were put out there, the kids are complaining in school, they need sunglasses because they're so bright. And now, and now they put them into different colors, and that way, the color controls the brightness of LED. Because the ones that were putting in the safety complex are different than the ones that were putting in the senior center, because of that reason.
This is for, this is for signage, you're going to take signage and stuff?
Yeah, but this, I'm just saying, that's how they control it now with their colors, because they were too bright.
Well, I think if we just got to figure out what's the low, and what's the high.
Okay, wattage?
Yeah.
Oh, that was the next one, the one that you handed.
I guess, we just have one, but we can do that some more, we don't need to do it. If you want to look into it, Jay, and present something, what could be a low and a high for the energy committee.
Do you need your own? I'll give it to my favorite secretary of the energy committee.
That would be me.
Once we put this together, we'll give it to Larry, I would say.
Yeah, let him review it, dot the i's and...
So what are we doing? Is that commercial estate lots?
No, I just provided that for everybody to take a look at.
That came from Larry?
Yes.
This is what we have, I think, or is that, no?
No, that was proposed, that was for 9/11, right.
Yeah.
9/11, sort of.
I did it two-sided.
Oh, that's what you already have, that's my con.
Yes, I did that.
And yours is two, yeah.
Did you have that add into yourself?
I added that.
Oh, he did that himself.
Is there a packet that I'm missing, I didn't get?
Commercial estate lot, you should have, at the, you should, this is the one from last meeting.
Oh, last meeting.
Jim wasn't here, so I handed him his.
All right, so, I mean, that's, like I said, we're going to put this all together, and we can tweak it after it's all together, too.
We're not doing the last two tonight?
Oh, we can't, well, we moved on, Jay's going to find out as far as what wattage numbers we need for LED lighting.
And then the Larry Smith one you were just looking at.
Retail, wholesale.
But don't be surprised if the wattage goes backward or cull them, that's all.
No choking allowed.
We'll try not to.
Yeah, I'm not sure what all that pertains to, but...
What's that?
Well, I mean, in respect to everybody's time, we can table that to our next meeting.
So the next two were...
It's getting late, so.
What I would suggest is after we put that together, we give it to Larry, have him do a review.
No, is that Larry now, or Susan?
Well, Sue, Sue will be able to, she's in the front. Have her review it, just have it, just blend in with the rest of the bylaws and see if there's any...
Well, I thought Larry said here that he was going to retain us for everything except the DLTA, he was giving that to Sue. Or did he say he's going to retain Munson Ridge and give it to us?
That's what Larry said, even though I wasn't here, I watched the meeting on TV, Larry was staying on from Munson.
Okay. I know he was staying on for something, I know there was a line drawn the same, but I don't know what you're...
And Susan will handle.
Everything else.
Susan. She'll be a new representative.
Okay, so agenda items for next meeting?
Yeah, make it easy for Kathy.
We have review of potential bylaw changes?
Yes.
And anything else that comes up?
Yes.
Anything else that we know of now?
No, I don't.
Yes, no, maybe?
No, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Think that couple from the Wall Street, they're going to have to go through Kathy London to get that back on the schedule, or think they're just going to show up at the next meeting?
I believe they were told to get an appointment on the agenda.
They were told to contact Kathy, to put back an agenda.
Okay.
I had a...
You have a motion, and you have a second?
Motion in a second, so all in favor of returning the meeting?
Aye.
All right, so the order.